I will call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on August 23rd, 2024, through posting and notification of the press in accordance with Wisconsin Statute 19.84. Let's start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir.
Number one, Brian.
Entertain a motion to, consider a motion to adopt the August 27th, 2024 Board of Education agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Are we going online?
We are.
I didn't see a join thing.
Oh, I think I just said made by. I did, sorry.
Oh, there it is.
I got it, I got it.
Everybody all set? Vote.
Okay.
That vote passes unanimously. Commissioner Dahmerhausen is absent tonight. All right. Where am I? Let's use the safety message. How about that?
Well, my safety message is very timely. It's on extreme heat. How we all doing out there? So according to the American Red Cross, an extreme heat event is a series of hot days much hotter than the average for a particular time and place. Extreme heat is deadly and kills more people than any other weather event. Climate change is making extreme heat events more frequent, more severe, and lasting longer. So we should take action to prepare. So some of the suggestions that the American Red Cross proposes for extreme heat on their preparedness checklist is what to do before a heat wave occurs, which is, one, learn how to stay hydrated. A person should drink enough water to prevent heat illness. They approximate 64 ounces, which is equivalent to about eight cups of water a day. Everyone's needs may vary, so I always think that's a good goal, though, is 64 ounces. Gather emergency supplies is another checklist. Make sure that you gather enough food, water, and medicine to make sure that you can get through a heat wave if it's, if one is predicted. Make a plan to stay cool is another suggestion on their checklist. Spending few hours in each day in air conditioning can prevent help. Ugh, I can't talk at 6:03 tonight. Spend a few hours each day in air conditioning can help prevent heat illness. So make sure that your air conditioning before a heat wave occurs is in working order. And learn some emergency skills as well. Learn how to recognize and respond to heat illness. Learn first aid and CPR. And then when a heat wave actually does occur, some of the things that they suggest you do, i.e. yesterday or today, again, stay hydrated, drink plenty of fluids, encourage others to drink plenty of fluids as well, and actually to replace salt and minerals with snacks or sports drinks. Stay cool. If you're in your home and it doesn't have air conditioning, go to a pre-designated cooling location. Wear light clothing, loose clothing, and take cool showers or baths, and limit your outdoor activity. And then some of the things to help prevent heat illness is make sure that you know the signs and act on those if you or someone you know has those symptoms. And again, anybody can have or develop heat illness, but people greater at risk are older adults, infants, children, and pregnant women, people with medical conditions, outdoor workers, people with limited personal resources, and people living in places that lack green spaces. So let's all just be careful during these last few days and maybe tomorrow, but hopefully we'll have a break in the weather here shortly.
Please.
I think it's important as we are approaching the start of school. And one of the things that happened over in Iowa is unfortunately, a young lady was texting on her phone and she stopped in the middle of the roadway. She was completely distracted driving and a car ended her and killed her. And so just as we think about little distractions, just changing the radio, being on our phone, and we may think, oh, it's no big deal. But you know, and I will work, we can't talk on our cell phones at work. But then other times, when the head conversation, when you're picturing something other than what you're doing, driving, then that's when you need to get off the phone. Whenever you do that, because you're severely distracted at that point. And we think of just how quickly things can happen around the city. As I said, schools starting, kids, dogs, balls, all of those things can come out in front of you and your reaction time will be that much shorter if you don't pay attention. So I would just say, when driving, put your phone down and don't pick it up.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you very much, everyone. Next is citizen comments. I have one, but I shall read this before. Welcome all those who have signed up to speak at the board tonight. We value your input, interest in our school community. Accordingly, through Board Policy 0167.3, titled Public Comment at School Board Meetings, the board allows citizens an opportunity to express interest in and concerns for the schools during the citizen comments portion of the board meetings. We'd also like to remind you that school board meetings are the purpose of carrying on the business of the district. They are not public meetings, but official business meetings held in public. To ensure the board meetings are conducted in an orderly and productive manner, all public comments, no matter the topic, are subject to the following regulations. Number one, time limit. Speakers will be given one three-minute opportunity to address the board. This time limit will be enforced. If the speaker continues past the expiration time, the school board president or district official will ask the speaker to stop and leave the podium. Board Policy 167.3, adopted on March 9th of 2021, the portion of the meeting during which the participation of the public is invited to speak shall be limited to 30 minutes unless extended by the presiding officer. Number two, conduct. Speakers must conduct themselves with respect and civility. Participants shall direct all comments to the board, not to staff or other participants. No person may address or question board members individually. Prohibited conduct includes conduct which is disruptive to the meeting, interferes with the ability of others to observe the meeting or speak to the board, or interferes with the ability of others to observe the meeting or speak to the board. I just read that twice. Or interferes with the ability of the board to conduct business. This includes conduct which is abusive, harassing, or threatening, and conduct which includes the use of ulgarities or profanities. If a speaker violates this rule, we may prohibit the speaker from further comment at the meeting. Number three, topics for discussion. Speakers may not comment on confidential personal disputes, share grievances involving individual school employees that do not implicate issues of public concerns, or share individual student disciplinary matters as there are other channels available to provide for consideration and disposition of such matters. Number four, board response. Pursuant to Wisconsin Open Meetings Law, board members are prohibited from responding to public comments unless the topic is identified on the public posting of the board agenda. And number five, recess slash adjourn. In the event an individual conduct causes a disruption to the board meeting and the board cannot continue its business, the gavel may be used to declare recess or to adjourn a meeting. In addition, in such conduct constitutes a threat to health or safety of another individual individuals at the meeting, law enforcement may be contacted to restore order and safety. How did I do? Huh? I started laughing to myself because, you know, I started thinking of my seventh grade English teacher, Mrs. Miller. She was awesome. Hope she's listening. All right. We have one, Krista White.
Hello, Krista White, 4131 South Tracy Road. So I've been here this summer at each meeting and just going over, trying to get my message across, but not having it lost in the multiple roles that I've played in what I've brought up with needing a change in leadership at Parker High School as a former teacher there that should still be there at Parents' Night or Back to School Night tonight. Also then as having three kids at Parker and just being an advocate for education. I just, you know, compelled to be here for multiple reasons, but don't want anyone to think it's just out of, you know, a single reason. And it is your responsibility to maintain, hire and maintain the best professionals in the district. But for 14 years now, we've had someone in power at Parker High School.
Hey, Krista.
Yes.
I need to interject. You're really getting on that thin ice when you're talking directly about an individual.
Right.
So if you want to keep it a little more.
Okay.
You know.
That's fine. But also I did ask to meet with you guys back a couple of months ago to discuss things, you know, and not come here for three, I mean, I'm still going to come here for other reasons, but because there's always something that can be talked about. But so basically, in the leadership role, or leadership at Parker, Parker is now ranked 20th in the district with one school below them and then two that don't have any data for them. So somehow in the fall, or sorry, spring of 2012, Parker is at 19th best in the state for schools. Now we're 300 and some in the state, but in the district, 20th. How have we allowed that to happen? That's where I'm wondering, it's your, anyone in a position of power to, you know, make sure that we have the best employees and are keeping the best for that, for the, whatever position that may be. And with something that I wanted to bring up in having knowledge in the ag department, you know, in that brand new greenhouse coming up, which is amazing, but now we're not offering plant science anymore. And there's a biology teacher teaching it, which obviously is more than qualified to teach it, but has no affiliation with FFA and the importance of the fundraising that goes into that. So I'm just, there's certain things that have declined based on personal decisions made by leadership. And then lastly, I see Be the Change is on the message electronic board at Parker. And, you know, it's hard to be the change when those in power ignore and when it's one voice every three minutes, or three minutes twice a month. So I would love to discuss with you as a board. I'll submit another letter like I did two months ago. Thank you.
Thanks, Krista. Okay. I have no further requests. Let's move on to item number four. Consider approval of the August 27th, 2024 consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We're going to fire up the screen here in a second.
Are you getting it?
No.
No.
It's the heat.
I just got kicked out of the meeting two minutes ago.
Yeah.
The computer restarted too.
Yeah, I think there's some technique. I have the little.
Do you want to, do you want to take a roll call vote?
Let's do a roll call vote, please. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I am excited to be here tonight to talk to you about retirement. You know, we, we work for years and years and the goal is to retire and you sail off into the sunset and you, you know, enjoy the rest of your, your days. And so what we are going to be talking about tonight is the School District of Janesville Early Retirement Benefit. And more specifically, the addendum, which you may have also known as the Retirement Cliff, if you have heard those words before. So tonight for discussion, we will be talking about the eligibility for retirement, what the current benefits are, the early retiree addendum. I'll provide some explanations on health reimbursement accounts. And then, you know, questions at the end. So, starting off with eligibility. In order to receive the School District of Janesville Retirement Benefits, you had to have been hired prior to July 1st of 2015. In addition to that, you will be between the ages of 55 and 64 and will have worked in a full-time capacity for a minimum of 10 years immediately preceding retirement. Okay? If you meet those qualifications, the schedule of benefits you can see on, on the screen. So for those who retire by June 30th of 2025, would receive 36 months of insurance with the ability to convert any bank sick time that they have to purchase additional months of health insurance. The next tier would be July 2025 through June of 2035. Those employees would receive 24 months of health insurance and then a final tier amount for July of 2035 through June of 2045 for 12 months. All three of those have the ability to convert their bank sick time to purchase additional months of health insurance. So just a quick explanation of the sick time conversion. There are two banks. There is a bank for time accrued prior to July 1st of 2015 and those days can only be used to purchase months of health insurance. Okay? The bank after July 1 of 2015 can be utilized for the same benefit. However, the difference with the bank too is that in the event that the early retiree does not need additional months of health insurance to get them to age 65, we will pay that remaining balance out into a tax sheltered annuity for them. Okay? Now, we'll switch to those employees hired after July 1st of 2015. The eligibility requirements do remain the same. Minimum of 55 years of age, must have worked in a full-time capacity. However, for those employees, health insurance is not tied to the benefit. What the employee would receive is all of their bank time is put into a tax sheltered annuity and at the conversion rate of $147 for every eight hours. Okay? Okay. Is there any questions on the current benefit? No? Okay. So from here, we will kind of shift our discussion over to the early retiree addendum. And why is the district looking into this? So first, effective, as we just spoke of, effective June 30th of 2025, eligible employees who meet the retirement guidelines. If they don't retire, would lose the one year of health insurance. Okay? And so when we started looking over these numbers, the district assumed that, bless you, majority of these employees would take advantage of that third year and retire in, at the end of the 24, 25 school year. And so where we wanted to make, what we wanted to make sure of is that with, we wanted to be able to fill these positions. And if we had a majority of those employees retiring in one year, we are unsure if we would be able to, one, fill all of those positions and, two, in addition to our normal 10 to 12% turnover rate, it would just be a lot for us to be able to manage in one single year. The, the market is just, we have less and less applicants for each position that we post. And so what did we do? We partnered with Foster and Foster Consulting Firm. We shared our concerns and our goals with what we wanted to accomplish. After that, we consulted with our legal team. We wanted to make sure that we weren't facing any discrimination against other employee groups or, or anything like that. After that, I met with the JEA, provided the options that we were looking at and received positive feedback from them. And finally, I met with the eligible employees. I sent an email out to the employees. I picked some from each employee group. I wanted everybody's opinion. And so some of them said, I'm retiring. Nothing is going to make me stay. But a majority or a lot of them said, I don't know if I'm ready. I don't know if I'm ready to retire, but I don't want to lose that third year of benefit. And so my takeaway after all those meetings was that that third year is important to that, to, to staff. It's important to them. And so if we have these highly qualified employees, if they have more to contribute to our district, to our community, and to our students, we want them to stay. We want them to stay in Janesville. So I'm going to kind of go over the benefit one more time a little bit, but the current benefit would be, again, the employee would receive the 36 months plus the sick leave conversion. What the district is proposing is the employee would retire with 24 months of health insurance, as it's stated in the employee handbook. They would be able to convert their sick leave to purchase additional months. And on top of that, once their early retiree contract concluded, the district would contribute a value of 12 months worth of the district's portion of the health insurance into a premium-only health reimbursement account. And I know that's a lot. So here is, again, the 24 months, the sick leave conversion, and then in an HRA is what is the vehicle that we would utilize to provide the employee with that third year of benefit. Okay? The value of the benefit would be determined at the time of retirement. Okay? So that would just be included with their, perhaps their retirement contract. And one thing I did want to touch on is that it is premium only. So it, and they would have to pay first and then they are reimbursed. Then they would submit the receipt or proof of payment for the reimbursement. And so I know that everybody is very familiar with HSAs because that's what the district currently utilizes. The district wanted to utilize a different vehicle, had different options and different wiggle room, I would say. So an HRA, the one that the district would use is premium-only post-employment health reimbursement account. So again, it's strictly for premiums only. It's completely employer-funded. Unused funds carry over year to year, tax-free for the district and the retiree. And it's portable. And so when I say it's portable, what I mean is that we're noticing staff are moving out of the area. And with our current plan, they're tied to Dean and Mercy. So when we have somebody who moves across the country, they're only able to get urgent and emergency care. Okay? What this does is this allows them to purchase insurance in their area. And maybe it's a different plan that suits their needs better. Maybe it has a different drug prescription plan or a different deductible or just different benefits. The employee is able to determine what kind of healthcare they will have. Okay? So I just want to clarify, who would be eligible for this HRA benefit? And it would be all of the existing employees who meet the guidelines to retire by June 30th of 2025, but defer. What, they must work one full assignment year. So we would want them to finish their 25, 26 calendar schedule. And then they must be enrolled in the district's health insurance for a minimum of one year. And so I, I did just want to provide some information on how an HRA works with retirement. So prior to an employee becoming Medicare eligible, they can utilize their HRA for health insurance premiums paid with after-tax dollars. Okay? So that could include COBRA, health, dental, and vision from another employer. They would have to work with their payroll department to get that post-tax. But, or even on the marketplace. The, the benefit of an HRA is that we would be able to provide our employees who are over the age of 65 with this benefit. Okay? So what that means is that right now, our current retirement guidelines indicates that at the age of 65, employees are no longer eligible for health insurance benefits. Okay? So, but with this option, we didn't want to exclude anybody, you know, who would be turning 65 and wasn't ready to stop working. So an HRA allows us to still contribute to that. So the employee upon Medicare eligibility would, they can use it for everything that we had just spoke of, but it can include Medicare premiums and Medicare supplement premiums. And then at that point, we can even include it to, we can adjust it to include medical care expenses. I also wanted to provide what the benefit may look like. Okay? And so I just want to be very, very clear that this is based upon this year's amount. It may be different in the upcoming years. So what it would look like for a single employee, they would receive, you know, almost $560 a month to go on the marketplace or wherever they choose and buy their insurance for a total annual amount of almost $6,700. Family, someone enrolled in family would receive almost $1,700 in a total value of the annual benefit amount of a little over $20,000. Again, those are based upon this year's rates. And so, again, it's subject to change. Is there any questions?
You know, we were, I was very excited about getting this on the agenda tonight, but correct me if I'm long, we're still, we're really still waiting for our final numbers on the fiscal impact and what this could mean. So, is, right, so we're really not asking tonight for a vote because we're still working through that, because at one hundred and thirty people, there's a lot of variables in there, individual choice. So, we're trying to narrow that number down to predict much closer fiscal impact instead of just doing a hundred and thirty people in the math that way. Is that kind of?
Yes.
Yeah. If I could just add, this week, we received some information from Foster and Foster in regards to the district's long-range obligation for Fund seventy-three. And I just want to make sure that I give the board the exact detail and recommendation. And so, we had a couple of questions and we just really want to give you that, and we bring it back the next meeting so that you have a clear understanding of what. And again, Fund seventy-three is our O P E D, that post-employment benefit. And their actuarial science, scientists obviously go through the model, and we just have a couple of questions of the information it gave us, and I think we'd feel real great about being able to give that to you, say, this is what we, and again, we'll never know for sure, but what we think it would cost over the next decade. I think in my world, it's eight years because in two thousand and thirty-three, you then only have two more years. Someone in fifty-five will be sixty-three, and then that's when it ends, technically, because you're going to lose a year every year after that. So, those are the details. So, we shared this in P P C. We want to make sure we give you this information. We're really interested and excited about that because I think it will help us delay potential retirement of a number of folks, whether they're teachers or other staff. And that will benefit us as a district to have some longevity of folks. So, I think that's enough of what we're trying to, looking at Dan, and he's given me some nods along with Scott. So, we'll bring it back with a few more numbers.
Anyone else? Any questions?
Is it too early as far as the stratification of the employee groups of the hundred and thirty? What's the makeup of that?
Oh.
Is it too soon?
Um, I, I'm sorry, I don't, I know I had, I don't know it off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
Sixty-five, thirty-five, sixty-five support, or sixty-five certified staff, thirty-five support.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant like administrators, teachers, not, okay, yes. Our certified staff.
Ish.
Anyone else?
I just want to say thank you for meeting with, you know, all the interested parties and people would be affected about the, by this and working together on, you know, or getting input on possible solutions to the problem. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, Jamie, thank you. I know you worked really long and hard on this, and we've had a lot of meetings through P P C, and, and so, you did a really nice presentation. I appreciate that you really broke all the explanation up for us, but then for anyone watching with questions too, because you really simplified it. I just was thinking about this. I'm looking at the potential benefit amount. So, let's say I'm using this benefit and I buy insurance through the marketplace and it's five thousand dollars for the year, and I have like almost seventeen hundred left. That would, then I could continue to use that until I've used that. So, it's not, it's twelve months' worth of funds, but it's not twelve months' worth of timing. I think that's just good for everyone to understand that too because it can extend. You might be able to find health insurance benefits for less than this particular amount. So.
Yes, and that is, one of the benefits of it is perhaps maybe, you know, the employee is on, can go on a spouse's insurance, and they can hold on to those funds. They, they are not required to spend them. So.
So, it's for, you have to be on the insurance for one year.
Correct.
But open enrollment is done for this school year. What if now they're like, oh, I, you know, I can't get it because I'm not in the insurance?
So, they would enroll in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for the insurance because they would have.
Stay on another year, okay?
Because, yep, because they would stay one more year.
Okay, thanks.
All right, anyone else?
Okay. Thank you.
Let's move on to five point two. Mr. McCray, a little budget presentation. Thank you.
So Superintendent Holt, uh. So, I'm between you and seven, right? That's, that's, that's where it stands. No, that's fine. I was going to kind of poke fun at myself, right? Superintendent Holtzman was like, please, no slide deck, Dan, we don't have time for that. So, you have a repeat of a memo that we provided to the Board of Education in July, a couple of quick updates to that, and then just a couple of really notes as we look to embark upon, really, October, which is the crucial month for school district finance. Really, again, a great big thank you to the Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee, the Board over the years, and we really have a good team regarding district staff and certainly the staff within Business Services, right, who work with other departments to pull the budget all together. We don't typically employ a zero-based budgeting perspective, right? We kind of really roll forward based upon what we know is coming from the state and really based upon the needs of the district. Matt Sylvester Knudsen, our very capable Director of Finance, is working with L and I on almost a zero-based budget approach, right, just to kind of build that out to see if we can't really leverage resources even better than we have. Because the reality is, is this is a good fiscal year for twenty-five, twenty-six, and then after that, it's not bleak, right? But we really only have for the next three hundred and ninety-eight years, right, three hundred and twenty-five dollars in revenue limit authority per member, which is approximately two point nine million. That's not a lot in a district this size, right? So, that's why, too, we're looking at our operating referendum, not only in two thousand and twenty-four, but certainly in two thousand and twenty-six. That's why we're managing our Fund thirty-eight within our revenue limit authority to perhaps, you know, provide us with some additional operating dollars, not dedicated to debt, dedicated more to operations, right? So, we're taking, if you will, not only a year at a glance, but more of a multi-year perspective, looking into the future when it comes to building our budgets. Couple of key points, right, is the budget is, if you will, or the budget process is never a touchdown, right? Got a lot of business folks on the board, right? So, are we engaging deming? Is there always kind of a continuous improvement approach to our work? And the answer to that is yes, right? And then, we also must ask ourselves, right, we had a really good discussion midsummer at the director's level, right, in terms of, are we really aligning our money to our budget priorities? And I think you've seen that, right? But we can always get better. When I say, have you seen that, really, that's targeting small class size, right, at those transition grades, kind of like a K one, right, also sixth grade and ninth grade, right? So, that's an example of, we have some issues targeted to, right, literacy, targeted towards math, and then how are we investing to ensure that we're targeting resources, right, to meet those needs as a district? We can always get better. It's good, but can we get better? Again, kind of going back to the deming approach, right? And you kind of at times have heard me say, okay, we really need to understand, right, what is recurring costs and then non-recurring costs? You know, non-recurring is, if you will, kind of that one-time investment. Recurring is year after year. So, how are we managing those two elements of our expenditures and probably also our revenues, right? And I alluded to this earlier, right? We really have to take a long-term view. We just can't live in the year and with a myopic viewpoint, right? So, are we taking a much broader viewpoint? You know, I was fortunate to play soccer in college. I was fortunate to play basketball, which seems like, well, it is like decades and decades ago, right? But sometimes, you know, in playing and in coaching, right, the question is, is are we seeing the full field of play, right? So, I may make a successful pass in a possession-oriented game such as basketball or soccer, right? But there may have been someone open under the basket or in front of the goal, right? It's successful, and that's maybe a play, right? And if we kind of apply that, if you will, to our budgeting process, that's good, but can we be better? Is there a better opportunity? And then last, right, really, part of it is, and you've heard me say over the years, is transparency would me be giving you, and I want to thank Sue Johnson, right, for spending some time, and I said this exact same thing to her. We could give you a six-hundred-page budget document and say, there we are, we're transparent, go figure it out. But what we've really tried to do over the years is provide some clarity to that transparency and some understanding as well. So, again, that's kind of, if you will, some backstory, and I'm watching the clock, Commissioner Paul. So, a couple, a couple of key points, we'll get into some numbers. July first, and I think we last presented a budget update, and I may have thrown this out there, but it wasn't in the memo, but we are anticipated to receive approximately four million dollars in equalization aid. That's an estimate. And you go, that's great. But just as a reminder, that's not four million dollars in additional revenue, that's really four million dollars in aid, which reduces the local property tax burden, right? So, that's good when we're looking to really kind of manage the budget. We had in August, and I don't want to steal any Commissioner Argy because I think he's going to spend fifteen minutes, if you will, on equalization property values. Municipal values come out in August, so we can kind of see where we're trending. And what we shared with Finance is municipal values are expected to be, in the school district of Janesville, one point two, excuse me, one point eight percent less than they were the prior year. For years, we've had increases in property values, five, six, eight, ten, twelve-plus percent, right? And you're going to say, well, that's great. And it is great when you're calculating the mill rate. Doesn't mean more money for the district, right? So, in short, with less property value and with an increasing levy, right, it appears as though we're getting more money from a local property taxpayer than we really are because the mill rate's going up. And that's just a simple calculation, right, of the levy divided by property value. When property values go down, the, the mill rate naturally goes up. So, the big question, I think this is Mr. Murray's, those are just kind of two quick budgetary highlights in terms of data points we know at this time. I know Mr. Murray's like, so will it be balanced? We're going to have a balanced budget. Okay? And you're all a well-read board, right? And I think probably at the beginning of summer, you heard of a district kind of east of us, rather large on the lakefront, right, that had some fiscal issues, right? Then recently, in the Madison area, there was another district that had some fiscal issues. And then, just this last week, in the western suburbs of Milwaukee, right, there's another district that has some fiscal issues, right? I don't want fiscal issues because if there are fiscal issues, I'm not here anymore, right? So, that's fine, but we work really hard to prevent ourselves from being put in that type of situation, and that's good budgeting, that's good practices, right, and that's good communication, right? So, that's really what we're trying to achieve. It's not perfect, right? But it's, it's solid, and we shouldn't have any, any worries, Mr. Murray. So, we will have a balanced budget when it comes. Lots of dynamics we shared with Finance, we've seen some increases, right, in terms of our liability insurance, in terms of our workers' compensation, higher than we projected, right? So, we're trying to fold those in because, again, the goal is to achieve that balanced budget, right? So, there's still work to be done. There are still numbers that are coming out, third Friday count, right? Really appreciate Rachel and Kim's department in terms of, you know, harnessing all, and it's a big task, you know, twenty-plus, you know, nineteen schools, right, in terms of our third Friday count because that drives our revenue limit authority, right? Final aid will come out in October, final property values will come out in October. And when we go back to the count, let's not forget about open enrollment, okay? Since two thousand and nineteen, right, we have turned upside down in terms of our expenses are now greater than our revenues in terms of open enrollment. And when we see that shift, we are approximately one point five million to the positive in two thousand and nineteen, right? This last year, we're to the negative, right? So, we don't necessarily see it, but we feel it in terms of, we have to make up that loss, right? And that's where good budgeting comes into practice. That's where staffing and program determinations come into practice. So, that's just a quick update.
Thank you. Can you tell us what the next steps will be for budget approval, when we expect the budget book and when the public hearing might be and final approval for the board?
Yeah, absolutely. All great questions. So, we'll probably give a quick finance update in September, right? We'll probably do another one in October. But this is where October gets really interesting because when we do our budget publication, which we commonly refer to in the business office, no one cares in this room but me, it's the sixty-five, ninety budget report, right, is that's a class-two notice, requires two publications, right? So, we start publicizing that in October, but we still don't have all of our data elements come October. So, the numbers are wrong, right? They're close, but they're not exact. So, you'll start seeing that budget in the newspaper come early October. We'll probably at that first meeting in October, give the board another budget update, right? We still don't have all the final numbers, and then most likely, Denise, I'm going to say, it's probably about the twenty-third, twenty-fourth of October, right, is where we would ask the board for action. That's where we do the public hearing on the budget and where we ask for action to adopt the budget, and then the second action is for the board to certify the lobby.
Anybody else have any questions? I, I just have one, and I know it's very fundamental and, you know, complicated math formulas you use or we use, but what is the general number or dollar amount associated with each F T E or each student? Isn't there a, a number that's associated with each student when we do a count?
Yeah, we do.
Each student has a value?
Right, so, right, and again, great question. I'll start out simply because, again, this could be fifteen minutes, and I know you don't want a fifteen-minute answer, right? So, on our revenue limit authority, right, outside of any federal funding, it's really state aid and local property taxes within our revenue limit authority, it's eleven thousand dollars in revenue per student. When we add our non-recurring exemption to exceed the revenue limit authority, it does move that up, right? So, it's eleven thousand easy when you add another fourteen point five million this year because that's to exceed, that eleven thousand will go up close to twelve-five in terms of revenue limit authority, right? But the basic formula is eleven thousand. That's the revenue side. If you add in title funding and all other types of grants, state grants that we may receive, certainly you can say that's more than the eleven thousand plus the operating revenue limit authority to exceed. If you look at the expense side, it varies. A student at a secondary school, we may be having more expenditures per that student than we are at the elementary level. Because if you think about all what goes into that expenditure at the secondary level, the middle school, and then the elementary, it probably averages, right? So, someone's going to say, what, the math doesn't work out, which is why it's hard for me to answer that question. If someone goes, well, it's eleven, Dan said twelve-five, and then Dan threw out fourteen thousand. So, we're deficit spending at fifteen, okay, there's other aids and federal funds that come into play.
So, Roman is, Roman is important, and I know the directors are getting ready for, is it the third Friday count, first Friday count?
Third Friday count.
Third Friday count in September. And I know you guys take this very seriously and do a lot of work getting our students in the seats and such, so we appreciate that. So, thanks for the update. It was primarily for me, I think. I was just.
No worries. We're always available, right? So, if you have questions outside of this, you know, we're certainly more than happy to answer those questions.
Thanks, Dan.
At fifteen minutes, is that? At your place, you should have two documents, examples of information that we are using as we move forward. The first one, I'll just highlight you, you should have something that says Madison Elementary School on that. So, currently, I'm on the process of visiting all of our schools. I visited Madison and Van Buren this morning. Each school in our district will have one of these one-pagers, of which we'll kind of overview and provide information about what's happening at the school. So, when I go to Madison, I give them the big picture overview, and then I share with them, this is what it means in your building, and have an opportunity to talk to them. So, I just wanted you to know that these will be, you know, we're working on these. I have a couple of meetings tomorrow, I think Edison and Wilt, Washington, maybe? But this, this continues. But this, this continues to move forward. As soon as we have all of them completed, I'll try to find a, a folder or something that you can just poke in and grab them, as opposed to trying to send you twenty emails. So that's just some information to let you know what's happening. The second piece of information is um the draft draft, not the final draft, we're still working on things, of uh just our fact sheet. Uh the fact sheet is information that will go out to our community. Uh we're hoping that in information uh will go out to our community the middle of September, so that people have just more information about um what the referendum is, the two questions, and when they can expect uh the, the vote. There's a, the reason I say it's a draft draft, cause you see on the backside of that, there's some pictures that haven't been added. So you see there's just a nice little sky with green grass, and we'll actually add pictures in there um from our district. So I just wanted to share with you that uh those two pieces of information. We continue to have regular uh conversations, uh and right now our focus is internal communication. So sharing with all of our staff members um what the referendum means and what they can say, so that they have understanding of what it means for them in their buildings. We have identified three dates for uh some public um uh input slash hearings. Um and, and those uh will begin in September and end in October. We'll get you those dates and information when we finalize the locations for those. And um last, uh we continue to have regular public input, or, you know, I shouldn't say public, regular community um presentations. Where either Dan, both of us, or Dan or myself are communicating uh to, you know, rotaries and boosters and those kind of clubs. And those will continue to go through all the way until the election cycle. We have regular meetings with uh local business leaders and communities um to talk them about what the information is and share any information that we have with them uh so that people know. So I just wanna, wanna give you that uh we're on track to continue to communicate with uh what's happening. And again, if you have any questions um or information, let us know. Cause we continue to look for ways to pass this information on at community level.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment and, and thank uh Dan and, and Mark. They both have attended regularly the Labor Coalition Group and also the Buildings Trades Group as well. And um these two organizations um have been responding very favorably uh to what we're doing. So thanks, thanks for reaching out to those groups too. Anybody, go ahead, Michelle.
How will the school-specific ones be used? Are they for staff or also for families?
Yeah, they're for uh both. Probably more so for our families than they are really for our staff. But I handed it to our staff at these two spaces, and it's really just a general information um for that, but yes.
So I, just an idea, um if they aren't final, final yet, the school-specific one, if this one's being, I'm assuming mail their social media out to everybody. The school-specific ones don't mention the operational referendum, and that's where we'll get questions. But also, I, you know, I like the content for the operational referendum on the two-pager. I just think it'd be valuable, then they know, especially where you said, no new expected tax impact and, and the smaller class, keeps small class sizes. I, I wonder if there's a way to incorporate, I'm probably too late, this is my first time seeing it, a way to incorporate something about the operational on the family and one school-specific.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and we have a whole blank on the backside. And I think we could reorganize what's happening and make those, um, cause the operational referendum information will be the same at every school. Whereas the front page is gonna be a little different, so definitely we could work on that. It's a great idea. Thanks for that.
Um I'm just gonna add on to um continue on that. And I think it's important, cause there will be two questions on the ballots and for families to understand. I know that we can't say vote yes, but they, then it's really important for them to understand that it's not just one thing, it's two things. And to understand the differences, the simple language, this is really wonderful. It's exciting to see the effort that the district is putting to communicate the needs with our um community and all the different outreach. I think it's gonna make a big difference, and it's important for our people in our community to understand all of this, because not everyone does. So um good, good points, Michelle.
God, it's nice hanging out with people smarter than me. Is that it? Mark?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I just wanna take an opportunity too, I, I should have mentioned this during um the consent agenda when we approved retirements and resignations. And we had an individual uh leave that was in charge of the international program. And I just wanted to thank our staff, all of you, in particular Chris, for taking on that task, because these kids are here already. And we, we need support for them, and I know you guys are already full, your plates are already full. And this board um appreciates that, and um we'll, we'll have more discussion about that another time. So um next, Finance, Building and Grounds Committee report.
So typically, we have well-informed meetings, and they take an hour and a half to two. This last meeting took thirty-seven minutes. So I'm gonna make sure I fill the rest of the time now. Well, that wouldn't be me, as you know, so uh thank you for Superintendent Holsman for knocking off the long-range facility planning piece. Thank you for Mr. McCray for taking care of the um estimated equalized property values going down. So that really only leaves a couple of things. Really update on the ESR funding and keynote is the grant period ends the end of September. We're on track to complete everything that we expected to use those funds for. And just a couple items to, to note with that is the building automation system. It was awarded to a mechanical company, so that'll be moving forward. Fire alarm systems at Adam Roosevelt in Washington um will, aren't target to be completed here, the next, well, by the end of this week. And then fire systems at Harrison and Marshall will be completely upgraded um next month. I mention those things, cause of course, those are fundamental for what the referendum was. And as we think of ESR and safety, those were completely um on target. And then the, the last piece that we did is we had a tour. And first tour, if you haven't been to Franklin, and you walk in and you're gonna go, huh, this feels kinda different in here. Cause it's now a conditioned air school, which it was not before. As we think of where we are at now, so all of our secondary schools are in conditioned air. I see Principal Fanning in the, in the audience, and happen to be Kennedy Elementary is our only elementary that's completely in conditioned air. So as we think about the future, with the temperatures that we have, fortunately, it's this week and not next week. Just uh we, we'll need to be moving in a direction toward conditioned air for all schools. But as we toured Franklin, we worked, we walked through, and we noticed everything that had been done. And one of the more significant things, and I'm not sure how much people have paid attention to the pool area in Franklin, but it's, it, it's a completely different environment now. The humidity level, cause you're going pools, it, of course, is gonna be humid, but that was always seemed like extra humid. And that is really removed, and now it's uh be a good place for all swimming that takes place there, meets and things. So that's really a outstanding piece. And then the last piece we did was um, uh we toured the, kind of briefly, where the greenhouse is going on at Parker. And wow, it'll be a completely different learning environment for the students there. Not just, and as we talk about hydroponics, indoor greenhouses and those kinds of things, we're not just preparing our students for today, but really into the future, so that was really pretty neat to see. So we will be doing more of those tours as, as those are available when we complete work. Thank you.
That's great.
I have a question. Um when the greenhouses are completed, I would love an opportunity to be able to see them. Will there be an opportunity for the board? Will there be a ribbon cut? Like what will, do we know? Cause I think that would be really fantastic, a very exciting project. And Michelle and I, we do tours, but um, you know, I think it'd be a great time to have a little celebration.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I have a bunch of future meeting dates. Our PPC committee will be meeting on Monday, September ninth. This is a change in date, because the first Monday of the month is actually Labor Day, so it's a week later. So Monday, September ninth at four-thirty PM here at the ESC. The Board of Education will meet the next evening on Tuesday, September tenth at six PM, again, here at the ESC. The Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, September seventeenth. Currently, the time and location are to be determined. And our next, our final Board of Education meeting for September will be on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth at six PM here at the ESC.
Also might add, a week from tomorrow is a agenda-setting meeting. The Superintendent and the President meet. Any board member have an agenda item they'd like for us to consider? Or if you're interested in intending, please let me know, cause we have to make sure we don't get past our quorum. But um, so I just thought I'd offer that up. Anything else? Anyone else? Anyone else? We're adjourned.